Meeting to order. Thank you for coming tonight. It is now 7:00 PM, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. I am President of the Board, Joe Runions, and welcome everyone who is here tonight. Becky, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Jones is absent. Alderman Taylor?
Here.
Alderwoman Bibbs?
Here.
Alderman Hartman?
Here.
Alderman Runions?
Here.
Alderman Maloney?
Here.
Alderman Rousey?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance and for one moment of silence afterwards, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
Mr. President?
I move that we approve the agenda as printed.
Second?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I second.
Thank you, sir.
No, we need to amend the agenda. To remove item D.
Do we have a discussion?
Mr. President?
We can withdraw that motion if...
Yeah, I would like to recommend withdrawing the motion. We need to amend the agenda to exclude item D as in David in the awards and presentations.
Do we have a second?
I second, Mr. President.
Alderman Maloney.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Tonight's agenda has been approved with the removal of item D. Approval of the minutes from the Board of Alderman Regular Session on October the 10th, 2023. Is there a motion?
Mr. President?
Alderman Taylor?
I move that the minutes from October 10, 2023 be approved as printed.
Is there a second?
Mr. President, I'll second his motion.
Mr. [inaudible]. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes of October 10th have been approved as presented. Presentations and awards and organizational business. The first item is recognition of the Grandview Area School 4th graders' fire prevention poster, and would the contest winners please come forward? And Fire Marshal Mark Walker will be presenting this award. We're all joined over here.
All right, just real quick. A little word about what we did. October is fire prevention month. With the 8th through the 14th, the fire prevention week. This year's theme was cooking safety starts with you. They have seen the banners in front of the stations. So 4th grade classes were all invited to participate in our yearly poster contest. The poster was to include aspects of the fire prevention week theme, as well as a student's own artistic flair. This year, we had four schools participate, and after much deliberation due to all the great submissions, here's our winners, at least some of them. So, these are all, yeah, these are all quartered. So, is Isabella Forbes here? No? That was Isabella's poster. We get those. She won second place for Belvedere Elementary. Jada Rhodes-Sowell, is she here? Well, she won first. How about Evangeline Hernandez? Yes, no? No, thank you. Thank it? I know Oscar made it. Oscar Faria, is that right? All right, there's Oscar's poster. Come on over.
Come on up.
You did a good job.
Show us.
Yeah, show your poster too.
I'll hold the certificate, you hold the poster.
Good job.
There you go. Good job. Reddellmere Elementary, is my R here? Did I say my R? That's not true. I got it here. I got it, good stuff. It helps if I get it in right order. There you are. All right. And how about Anna? Is Anna Baskin? Partagina? She said, go big or go home. That's great, that we all was. All right. Thank you. And last two, Cardi Faye's? And last but not least, Salkey. I'm not going to pronounce your last name. All right. Thank you so much, parents, for getting them out here. It's a cold rainy day, and thank you for supporting our fire prevention week. So in addition, congratulations. The first place winners also will get a ride to school on the fire. Thanks, guys.
We have one more award, and that's the Arbor of Excellence for Parks and Rec. Director Jarrett Ebert would please come forward and his staff.
Usually the mayor talks. So, yeah, this award we received from the Missouri Department of Conservation for our work, our Arbor work over the last several years within the community. From anywhere from updating our technology to inventorying all the trees within the city park system, you know, trimming, pruning, removals of our trees. So, these guys have put in a lot of hard work and effort to make our tree community very healthy, very appealing, beautifying all our park system through our tree work. And so, to be recognized as the municipality of excellence for this year and the whole state of Missouri is, we're very proud of that.
Next, next on the agenda is public comments. I hereby declare public comments open. If you would like to speak on public comments, step forward. You have three minutes or less per meeting. Please step forward if anyone has anything to say.
Good evening, see you at Grandview. I come here tonight in regards to safety of our public...
Sir, can you give us your name and your address, please?
Sorry. Name is Ed Costa, C-O-S-T-A. Live at 1107 High Grove Road, Grandview, Missouri. I come here in regards to safety of our children on our city streets. We have a serious problem. Problem is speeding with high-powered vehicles. I've brought this attention to this committee before, and it seems like maybe we are not addressing it quickly enough, or maybe it's falling on deaf ears. I was specifically at a customer's home this last week, specifically on 6th Street and 135th Street in our community. I have seen his car many times, and I actually was able to witness, because he lived right across the street from my customer last week. It is a very high-powered Mustang with very loud muffler on it. It also has auto start, because I already witnessed that too. He was out there, and he wasn't even out with his car at 11:00 AM that morning on Saturday, hit that auto start, and he hadn't even come out of the home, and that thing sounded like a cannon going off when it started. The problem is, out here off, and I'm probably going to run out of time, and I apologize for that, but we have a serious problem here. I've asked for speed bumps or speed plateaus to be out here, and I've been told that they're not authorized basically in the city of Grandview. I don't know why. I live right directly across from an elementary school, right here at Grandview Forest System. When cars are parked out here picking up their kids at 3:30 in the afternoon, there is a traffic person out there at 10th, or excuse me, I believe 11th Street and High Grove, and all she can do is watch the vehicles race by while these students are being waiting to be picked up. Because I live right across the street, I witnessed this personally. I have seen a dark green pickup truck go flying at 60 miles an hour in a 25 mile an hour zone during picking up time to pick up your students. This is unacceptable. We have to do something about it, or it's going to get out of control. Thank you.
Please sign in. Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? I declare public comment closed. There's no public hearings tonight, so we will move on to consent items. And it will move for consent items E through I, with D being left out. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President?
Alderman Maloney?
Make a motion to approve consent items E through I as printed and presented.
Do I have a second?
Mr. President?
Alderman Hartman?
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to ordinances. Do I have a motion for Bill 7728?
Mr. President?
Alderman Taylor?
I move that Bill number 7728 be placed on its first reading.
Have a second?
Mr. President?
Alderman Hartman?
I second that.
Becky, would you call a roll?
Bill number 7728, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with the Grandview Youth Court for youth court services and authorizing payment.
I want a question. Have a motion for a second?
It was Hartman had the second?
Mm-hmm.
All those...
All call roll. All call roll. Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs?
Aye.
Alderman Runions?
Aye.
Alderman Rousey?
Aye.
Alderman Maloney?
Aye.
Do I have a second?
Mr. President?
Motion. Maloney?
Move that Bill number 7728 be placed on its second reading.
Do we have a second for that bill?
Mr. President?
Alderman Rousey?
I'll second his motion.
Bill number 7728, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with the Grandview Youth Court for youth court services and authorizing payment.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Do we have a motion for final reading?
Mr. President?
Alderwoman Bibbs?
I move that Bill number 7728 be placed on its final reading and said bill be enacted.
Do we have a second?
Mr. President?
Alderman Rousey?
I'll second her motion.
Alderwoman Bibbs?
Aye.
Alderman Rousey?
Aye.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Maloney?
Aye.
Alderman Runions?
Aye.
Ordinance number 7469.
Is now ordinance 7469. I entertain a motion for Bill 7729.
Mr. President?
Alderman Maloney?
Move that Bill number 7729 be placed on its first reading.
Do I have a second?
Mr. President?
Alderman Taylor?
I second.
Bill number 7729, an ordinance renewing a software license and service subscription agreement with Central Square Technologies LLC for records management and computer-aided dispatch software. Alderman Maloney?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Runions?
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs?
Aye.
Alderman Rousey?
Aye.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Motion for second reading?
Mr. President?
Alderman Taylor?
I move that Bill number 7729 be placed on a second reading.
Do we have a second?
Mr. President?
Alderman Hartman?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill passes.
Motion.
Now I'll go to third reading.
Final passage.
Final passage and third reading.
Mr. President?
Alderman Maloney?
Move that Bill number 7729 be placed on final passage and said bill be enacted.
Do I have a second?
Mr. President?
Alderman Rousey?
I'll second his motion.
Alderman Maloney?
Aye.
Alderman Rousey?
Aye.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Runions?
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs?
Aye.
Ordinance number 7470.
Have a motion for Bill 7731.
Mr. President?
Alderman Taylor?
I move that Bill number 7730 be placed on its first reading.
Second.
So, a second?
Mr. President? I'll second the motion.
Bill number 7730, an ordinance authorizing a one-year extension to the user-agency agreement with the Kansas City, Missouri, for participation in the metropolitan area regional radio system, Mars, and authorizing payment.
Any discussion?
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Maloney?
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs?
Aye.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Rousey?
Aye.
Alderman Runions?
Aye.
Is there a motion for Bill 7730 for a second reading?
Mr. President?
Alderman Maloney?
Move that Bill number 7730 be placed on second reading.
Do we have a second?
Mr. President, I second.
Bill number 7730, an ordinance authorizing a one-year extension to the user-agency agreement with the Kansas City, Missouri, for participation in the metropolitan area regional radio system, Mars, and authorizing payment.
Do I have any questions? I think, just, this is where we're paying for the sewer connections, is that correct? Or no, wait a minute, that's the other one, all right. Chief Eyes, man.
Do you have a question, I'm sorry?
This is on the 911 on the radio?
It's our portion of the radio system, correct? And it's based off of how many radios we have, so in the RBA there, you say we have 212 subscribers, so that's our radios, fire departments, some other departments.
Okay.
It's our portion. Every city that has a communication center pays their portion of this every year.
Okay, thank you. I just thought we needed to confirm it. On the, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion for final passage?
Mr. President?
Alderman Taylor?
I move that Bill number 7730 be placed on its final reading and said bill be enacted.
Do we have a second?
Mr. President?
Alderman Hartman?
I second that.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs?
Aye.
Alderman Rousey?
Aye.
Alderman Runions?
Aye.
Alderman Maloney?
Aye.
Ordinance number 7471.
Ordinance now 7471. Do I have a motion for Bill 7731?
Mr. President?
Alderwoman Bibbs?
I move that Bill number 7731 be placed on its first reading.
Do I have a second?
Mr. President?
Alderman Hartman?
I second that.
Bill number 7731, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Rodmacher Brothers Excavation Company, Incorporated, for the construction of the Raytown Road bridges over the tributary to the Longview Lake project and authorizing payment.
I want a question.
Yes, Mr. President, I have a question. I believe we had discussed this before, and there was something about the eagle's nest that was holding us up because of the noise. I think the eagles have left because they took one of my dogs, so. But are we about ready to start on that? Are we going to wait till the spring? When are we going to start on that?
Sorry for your loss first?
I wouldn't.
City engineer will have an answer for you.
Thank you, sir.
Part of that environment requirement of the eagle within one mile radius of the project, we cannot drive a, the brush has those X piles, we cannot drive X pile during a certain timeline. So, we can only drive it during the summer.
Have they left yet? Because I'd be glad when they're gone.
They still here until...
I got one more dog.
Until summer.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Call roll.
Call.
Alderwoman Bibbs?
Aye.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Rousey?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Maloney?
Aye.
Alderman Runions?
Aye.
Do I have a motion for second reading?
Mr. President?
Alderman Taylor?
I move that Bill number 7731 be placed on a second reading.
Do we have a second?
Mr. President?
Alderman Maloney?
Bill number 7731, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Rodmacher Brothers Excavation Company, Incorporated, for the construction of the Raytown Road bridges over the tributary to the Longview Lake project and authorizing payment.
Any questions again? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Do I have a motion for final passage?
Mr. President?
Alderman Maloney?
I move that Bill number 7731 be placed on final passage and said bill be enacted.
Do we have a second?
Mr. President?
Alderman Rousey?
I'll second.
Alderman Maloney?
Aye.
Alderman Rousey?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Runions?
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs?
Aye.
Ordinance number 7472.
Hey, do we have a motion for Bill 77232?
Mr. President?
Alderman Rousey?
I move that we put Bill number 7732 on its first reading.
Do I have a second?
Mr. President?
Alderman Hartman?
I'll second that.
Bill number 7732, an ordinance approving a contract with American Ramp Company for repairs to the skate park and authorizing payment.
I want a question.
Mr. President?
Alderman Maloney?
The, Jared, I just had a quick question on this thing. Well, want to comment first. I'm glad this is a very unique, you know, asset to our park system, so I think it is definitely time for improvements and such on here. The, when this gets done, can you explain just the timeline of what you're expecting it to be done? Because I'm not a skater for a skate park myself, but I would assume that it's probably not used the most during the winter, but I could be wrong.
You know, if we get nice weather, it could be used. So, they work up until about Thanksgiving time, so they may be able to get this accomplished between now and Thanksgiving to get some of those repairs done. Just depends on materials and stuff, but, you know, going into next spring, when they start that work, hopefully it won't take more than, you know, a few weeks to accomplish the repairs.
Gotcha. And then, I just had a small question. When, something that has such wear and tear on, is there any type of warranty that comes with their work specifically?
I'd have to get back to you on that, I can't remember off the top of my head.
I have a question. Do we give any thought of extending this, because, you know, the...in the summer when they use it a lot, and we don't have a whole lot of parks in Ward 1, and they do go skating a lot, have you guys given any thought of expanding this?
Expanding the current location?
Yeah, moving...
Or moving it...
The current location.
Or building a new one in a different location.
No, the current location and expanding it.
Potentially...
Because you got plenty of room.
Potentially in the future, right now we just want to make the current repairs, and we'll have to do a little bit more, you know, surveying of the users of what they might like to see, you know, what does that look like, costs associated with that, so...right now people are fairly happy with the current one that we have, and so making repairs to those will go a long way.
Outstanding.
And gets used quite a bit, so...
Yes, it's good.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
All call roll.
Roll call.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Do we have a motion for second reading, 77...32?
Mr. President. I move that bill number 7732 be placed on a second reading.
Do we have a second?
Mr. President.
Alderman Rousey.
I'll second his motion.
Bill number 7732 in ordinance approving a contract with American Ramp Company for repairs to the skate park and authorizing payment.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do we have a motion for third reading?
Mr. President.
Alderman Maloney.
Move that bill number 7732 be placed on final passage and said bill be enacted.
Second.
Second.
Mr. President.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I second.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Ordinance number 7473.
Do we have a motion for bill number 7733?
Mr. President.
Alderman Taylor.
I move that bill number 7733 be placed on its first reading.
Do we have a second?
Mr. President.
Alderman Rousey.
I'll second your motion.
Bill number 7733 in ordinance approving a Missouri Department of Conservation Cost Share Agreement for Tree Pruning and Hazard Tree Mitigation and Authorizing Payment.
I have a question.
Yes, I have a question. On the tree trimming, are we talking about the main veins that they're gonna go around and cut the trees at, like, those big trucks are hitting right now, or are the trees in the park?
These are all focused on park trees.
Okay.
So, we...you'll remember we did that tree inventory a year ago, this is one of the benefits that we received from having that tree inventory done, so now we're going back and trimming and removal of our most high priority trees or hazard trees.
Okay.
This would be trimming trees specifically within the parks.
Okay.
So, is that...what do you...how are you gonna handle Valley Park?
What's that?
How...how we handle Valley Park?
Yeah, so that was...
There's probably more trees there.
Yeah, that one's a little bit trickier, there's companies with...that'll have to get, you know, large booms to get over there, or, you know, they have smaller equipment to get over there and remove and load out some of that equipment.
And I think there's a...a path coming off of Dr. Grease that goes down there that someone's dumping trees, I'm not sure if that's part of the park, but I think it is.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Do we have a motion for second reading, bill 7733?
Mr. President.
Alderman Maloney.
Move...make a motion that bill number 7733 be placed on second reading.
Do we have a second?
Mr. President.
Alderman Rousey.
I'll second his motion.
Bill number 7733 in ordinance approving a Missouri Department of Conservation Cost Share Agreement for Tree Pruning and Hazard Tree Mitigation and Authorizing Payment.
Do we have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Do we have a motion for final passage?
Mr. President.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I move that bill number 7733 be placed on its final passage and said bill be enacted.
We have a second.
Mr. President, I second.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Ordinance number 7474.
Do I have a motion for 7734 bill?
Mr. President.
Alderman Maloney.
Move that bill number 7734 be placed on its first reading.
Do we have a second?
Mr. President.
Alderman Rousey.
I'll second his motion.
Bill number 7734 in ordinance...in ordinance...for an execution of an engagement letter with Allen Gibbs and Hulick L.C. to conduct the annual audit of the financial records of the city of Grandview for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2023, and authorizing payment.
I have a question.
Yes, I have a question. This audit, is it always done in October, or is it done at the beginning of the year? Because I think...
They...they do it at the culmination of each fiscal year on September 30th, they'll have their field work here in January and then do the report through February and early March.
Okay, that's...
You'll get the report sometime towards the end of March.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking.
Anyone else? Okay.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Do we have a motion for second reading?
Mr. President.
Alderman Rousey.
I move that we put bill number 7734 on a second reading.
Do we have a second?
Mr. President.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I second.
Bill number 7734 in ordinance authorizing execution of an engagement letter with Allen Gibbs and Hulick L.C. to conduct the annual audit of the financial records of the city of Grandview for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2023, and authorizing payment.
I have a question.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Do we have a bill for...move for final passage?
Mr. President.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I move that bill number 7734 be placed on its final passage and said bill be enacted.
Do we have a second?
Mr. President.
Alderman Hartman.
I second that.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Ordinance number 7475.
Other business. Any...the aldermen have any...Alderman Rousey?
No.
Joe, I might just comment on what our public comment was, Ed, he lives right by me, and High Grove is a pretty fast-paced road, and he's really concerned about the kids, and I am also, but when school lets out, it seems like the cars back up 12th Street, and they also back up High Grove, trying to get in to get their kids picked up, I wish the school would have done a little something different to keep all that traffic out of those intersections. You know where I live, so if I come down 12th Street when school's getting out, I've almost gotta jog around those cars and look both ways, because I'm in the wrong lane to get over to my house, you know, so it is an issue, and he's talked to me several times about that, and he had suggested those plateaus, which are not speed bumps, but they just kind of gradually come up and go down, you know, I don't know what solution is down there, but he is correct, there's cars speeding quite a bit down through there, and with school out, they're also speeding down High Grove Road. I noticed we put a, I think a 25 mile an hour sign up not too long ago, and, you know, just...I'll just have to echo what he was saying, he's correct in that, I don't think there's been any kids hit, I think there might have been an accident or two in there since I've lived in that house, but it's concerning, and since it's a school zone, I think we maybe ought to look at that and maybe, you know, visit that again, Jamal, see what y'all think.
Could we...you know, we've got a speed limit show on Grandview Road, it shows how fast you're going, maybe can we get a temporary one that sits over there on High Grove? To start with?
Chief can answer that, but that's an easier solution, at the same time, we had this conversation with the traffic engineers to see if that would be a speed plateau, but we're very familiar with that, I mean, we have engineers in our staff, they looked into that, that wouldn't solve the problem, but deterrent would be writing tickets and what have you, that's another thing, and Chief can address that, how we can slow that traffic down.
Alderman Runions, your first question, we do have a portable trailer that we've got from a grant that we earned that we can put at that location if that's what we want to... We use it at different locations throughout the city, so sometimes it does alert people that, hey, you're too fast, that type of thing, and then as Jamal said, our other fault, we can concentrate a little more effort on traffic enforcement there, I mean, we get...we're trying to get out there as much as we can, but there's a lot of locations throughout.
And we got plenty of school districts and other roads that speed too, it's such a narrow street.
Historically, what will happen is we'll end up writing some tickets to folks that live right in that area, and they'll complain, but that's fine, if that's where we want to focus some efforts, we can.
And they'll complain to you guys too, and, look, we normally do have a rotation with regards to...with regards to these kind of traffic issues, but let's start with the monitoring the speed and letting people know, that is a very good deterrent, when you realize that, oh, wow, this is a school zone and I'm driving 40 miles an hour, 45 miles an hour, that's a good, good alert, and it works, let's give it a shot with that.
Yeah, I'm pretty conscious when I come down Grandview Road and you see that, you're doing 28, keeping an eye...anyone else? Alderman Maloney?
I do have a question.
Okay.
This is a procedure question, like I said, I'm kind of new here, and this is the first time I've seen an alderman sit in the mayor's position, now I'm kind of confused why he's getting to vote when he really should be, this is probably for Kerry or Becky.
Becky can, or Kerry can't.
I'm just kind of confused why he get a chance to vote, because we have a quorum without him, why he voting?
We knew this question was coming, we were prepared to answer that, it's legal rights, but go ahead, Becky.
It is...it is the...it is, I believe it's the law, state law, that allows the alderman to have his vote, to keep his vote, even though he is presiding in the absence of the mayor over the meeting, so, and if there is a tie, he votes as the mayor would vote.
So, he gets two votes?
If there is a tie.
Oh, if there was a tie.
Yes.
Yeah, and I would also tell you guys this too, this has occurred to me earlier, and I asked our city attorney to look into this and see how this works out, luckily that didn't happen, there was no tie in the voting.
Couldn't be.
Oh, yes, it could. Yeah, I will also tell you guys this too, there are cities, mayor gets to vote every time, regardless of tie or not, this is our ordinances, and there are a few other cities like us, mayor only votes when there's a tie, this is a preference, and that those preferences were casted a long time ago.
It's a fourth-class city.
Yeah, a fourth-class city has to do that way, we're governed by the state statute.
Correct.
If we were a charter city, then we can incorporate that.
I'm gonna...I'm not gonna correct, but I'm gonna express what I know about this, you could be a charter city, still not allow mayor to vote every single time, it's gonna be up to the charter commission to decide how the voting occurs, we can argue both sides for you guys as staff with regards to what is healthy, what is right, what's wrong, both options work, so it's not only charter cities, you can charter...you can be a charter city and take that right out, Kerry?
I was just gonna say, as the position of president of the board rotates, I think that that's designed to make sure that these instances of essentially having two votes wind up working out to be fair ultimately, because nobody remains president all the time, obviously, and this situation isn't one that we come across that often, where an alderman has to sit as president overseeing the meeting, so...
Yeah, and I think Becky and I were only...you weren't here yet, were you? When the mayor, Becker's passed away, and we had president of the board, I think was six months, something like that.
Alderman Dennis.
It happened several times.
And the other thing for the general public who's here and/or watching us at this moment, this is the board of aldermen who rotates the board president, so everybody gets a chance, this rotation takes a while, but everybody gets a chance.
That's good, I'm just curious.
Yes, Mr. President, I had a question for, trunk or treat is tomorrow at the View, is it gonna be in the east parking lot, or the west parking lot, or the old... And this would be if it's sunshiny and dry, where is it gonna be?
Yeah, so it's weather dependent.
Uh huh.
Right now with the construction going on in the west parking lot, we're actually decided to move everything over to the Meadowmere parking lot by the shelter, and...
Okay.
And have everybody park at the amphitheater, walk over, we'll stage all the vendors in that parking lot, and you can walk right by the community garden up into that parking lot and go that route, if it rains, we may move folks into the View, into the gymnasium and make a loop through there.
Gotcha, the...can we have some stated, or maybe put a couple additional handicap spots to where either the community garden's all handicap spot?
Yep.
So, it's a little bit closer, or if we can let them park where the old pool used to be or something, that's a little bit closer?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
I have one, since we brought up about the voting and the alderman, I think it's time for the board to have a discussion about going to a charter city, we could get into the last half of the 20th century and into the 21st century, because a fourth-class city of our size is a thing of the past. So, everybody, we can have that discussion, anybody willing?
If this is the desire of the entire board, happy to ask our staff to dig into this, but the call is yours, majority rules in this case. Majority rules in this case. Mr. President, I guess my thoughts are, I'm happy to learn more about it. I don't necessarily need, it's my own personal thought, don't need to make it a priority. I know that we have priorities set with our strategic plan, but if we could kind of work that research in, you know, in the not-so-distant future, just to learn more about it. I would be all for that, just because I'd love to, to learn more about pros and cons.
Yeah, Joe, I think it's a good idea to check it out, and like John said, we're going to educate ourselves no matter what, you know, so.
Sure. I, I see everybody shaking, they're happy to look into that, and Alderman Runions, you have a good point, there aren't very many towns who are fourth-class cities with 27,000 population, and normally
Raytown.
There are examples of Raytown is one, or similar population slightly less than ours, but normally your fourth-class cities are 5,000, around 5,000.
Yeah.
So there are pros and cons, but, but we'll, we'll look into that when we're ready. We'll bring it to you guys at a work session so that there is a discussion, there's pros and cons, and it'll take us a minute. Since you mentioned the strategic planning, we are going to be due for one next year, so we are gearing towards that too, you know, inviting our facilitator and what have you, as some of you guys are, have been, and some of you haven't been, that, that one Saturday we spent together to figure out what are the next goals, because some of our five-year goals, we have accomplished. So we need few more goals into the future so that we're able to move forward.
But, staff. Staff, what do you have for us?
I have a couple of things. One is an announcement, the groundbreaking for Station Two and a new DMV is going to be November 2nd, it's a Thursday. And we'll, no, no RSVP necessary at this point, and we're going to stagger them, it's not going to be at the same time, probably like 15 to 30 minutes apart. If you guys are interested in seeing the DMV, now we have the clean report of asbestos and everything else, it has been cleared. I'm happy to take you guys down there, we got the keys. It's, the only thing left on upstairs is a few studs, but outside of that, it's completely got it. So if you're curious to see before and after, obviously you guys are going to see the after, just let me know when you guys want to go there, it's just a quick walk.
Do you have anything else?
And the other one I have is, this is great news for us, this happened yesterday. We've been talking to Jackson County about some funding for our police department, and there were 911 funds that we went after, and we were able to get the dollars that we asked for totaling $351,000, and it is strictly going into our dispatch center. So we are going to, with this renovation, upgrade the entire system to 22nd century, not 21st. Twenty, once 21st century, we have, and it was a nine, nine and zero, I would say, nine yeses, zero no's, so we got a lot of support from the legislator at Jackson County, I wanted to publicly thank them, and I want to thank our chief to go there with me and the mayor the previous Monday. There were a lot of conversations, but we were able to get it.
You want to fill them in on our meeting last Thursday with, with the department revenue?
Sure, 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 absolutely, so Department of Revenue, DOR, was here from State of Missouri, as you all know, we are contracted with them for the last 40 years? Yeah, about 40 years with DMV, and, you know, we need to get their permission to move the, the space from here to the new location, and this time, their executive team was here.